I'm sounding kind of mumbly, but all right. Madam Clark, would you call us another place?
Yes, Mayor. Councilwoman Adoma?
Here.
Councilwoman Joyce Turner?
Here.
Councilwoman Clanton?
Here.
Councilman Ross Turner there?
Here.
We have a quick on the floor, Mayor.
So, Madam Clark, I'm gonna bring up a really good friend of mine and a person that's done great work in the world of clergy and administration. He's gonna do our invitation today, and that's Pastor Lee Mayne.
Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Good.
I don't miss these days. I don't know what's going on, but I feel like we all need some prayer.
Amen.
Thank you for the invitation, and it's so good to see so many people here. Just before I pray, I got a chance to be the chaplain of the day for the Georgia General Assembly, the House of Representatives, last week. And I got up, and generally you give a quick inspiration, and I got up. One of my favorite scriptures is out of Nehemiah. And Nehemiah was known for rebuilding the walls of Jerusalem, right? So I thought better before going to, you see what's going on in the middle there, about building walls. But I think it's appropriate here in a sense of, you know, Nehemiah faced an issue where the people of Jerusalem had walls that had been in shambles. And the walls represented for Jerusalem protection from their enemies, right? And so he had a heart to go back and help to rebuild the walls. The walls probably had been in shambles for hundreds of years up to that point. And I'm sure there were many attempts to rebuild the walls, right? But what he did was, he went back to the city and he called the people together. And he said, "Look, these walls are in shambles, and we have to do something." And the people said, "All right, let us come together and rebuild these walls." And so, as scripture reads in Nehemiah 2 and 3, it says that this tribe came together to rebuild this part of the wall. And next to that tribe was another tribe that came together to rebuild their section. And on and on and on. And the scripture reads that in 52 days, they rebuilt the walls in record time. Why? After hundreds of years? Because the people, they came together, this tribe, District 1, working with District 2, or working with District 3, 4, and on and on. And so what I'm saying today is that let us all, whether we are ineligible office or just regular taxpayers like myself, let us work together to build strong walls of protection for the city of Stonecrest. Let us pray, y'all. God, we are so thankful that you are an amazing God. God that knows all things, a God that loves us so much and is concerned about the things that concern us, God. Today we say thank you, God. Before one item of business is taken up, God, we just stop for a moment, simply say thank you. Thank you for giving us the presence of mind, as Grandma used to say, clothed in our right mind. Thank you for giving us a measure of health, God. Thank you for giving us leadership, God. Whether we like them or not, thank you for leadership that is charged with advancing the people's business. So today, God, we pray that the people's business is advanced with the people in mind. That what it takes to build this city, God, to grow this city, to do the work of the people for this city, my prayer is that it is done today in unity with people working together in love, together. And when that happens, God, we know your hands of blessing and protection will be on this city to advance the cause of the people. Today, we pray for blessings over each and every decision-maker here today. Bless them, God, show them you, and show them the way in which they ought to take. We love you so much, we honor you, we sing your son's name, we pray, Jesus. Let everybody say amen together.
Amen.
Thank you all for allowing me to pray.
Good evening, folks.
Good evening, Mayor.
It's my favorite time of the meeting. Every meeting, as a matter of fact, I get an opportunity to people of history, and also I have an opportunity to move with some people that have been moving with us for a long period of time. For those of you that don't know, and for those of you that do, to be able to create the city of Stonecrest, several things had to happen. First thing is that we had to have an initial board. And in an initial board, in the Stonecrest City Alliance, we had to find some folks that were dedicated, willing, and was truly interested in making sure that his mission came through. That was probably the hardest job ever for these three people. And we're gonna honor these three people today, and someone afterwards also, for the amount of dedication, the work, the heavy lifting that most of us wouldn't know about. And to be able to do that, I wanna give you just a short story on this. And this is the part you're really gonna appreciate. They were all women. How about that? No surprise, no, it's... Not at all. And with these three key women who have been involved since day one, and they're still involved, we had to move from Stonecrest City Alliance to Stonecrest Yes, from an education group to advocacy group. Then from Stonecrest Yes, to being able to make sure it was on the ballot so that you all could vote. And then, do what? Have a city. So without these three women, there would be no city of Stonecrest. So I wanna call them up and honor them for their leadership and dedicated capabilities. The first is Ms. Brenner, please. Come on up, please. There we go. The second is Ms. Michelle Lee Manuel. And the third is the most important of them all, is Queen, the first lady, Ms. Terry Vary. Very good, very good. So these were the three that started the foundation of the Stonecrest City Alliance Corporation. And without these three starting it, there would be no city. There would be no city of Stonecrest. But there's more. So what makes it most important also is, how did you all find out about it? Just went by osmosis? Just then just come through the air? There is a person that has covered us from day one, still covering us today. Heart dedication. Oh my God, the amount of hours that they put in. And then, just the way they handle our business from a media standpoint and from a coverage standpoint. Because what this person says sets the tone for how you all think about what's happening in our city from start to finish. So our leadership award for the century, those who is Valerie Morgan.
No.
Councilmen, we'll be doing minutes today. We will have a redress on those next meeting. Madam Clark, we'll go to public comments.
Yes, Mayor.
We're gonna do it this way. I appreciate it.
Cynthia Perry.
Again, good evening, Mayor, Councilman, and the citizens of Stonecrest. I'm here today, I'm a resident of the city of Stonecrest, and I reside at 3647 Salem Drive. And I'm here opposing the C store that we're looking at. I think the location is 5987 Salem Road. I am opposing this because I don't believe that it is in the same value that the community has. I'm not opposing progress for the city, but I do believe that we should monitor the means on how we get the revenue and progress. At the time that this zoning was done, I believe a lot of the subdivision was actually just being initiated. The developers were purchasing this property, and they were building this community, and we were nowhere where we are now at the present time. And this community is a residential community. And this C store is currently po- holes in the middle of a residential area. That is my main concern. The families, my neighbors, are very important to me. I'm looking around, and I see the green space and the water, the stream, the creek there at Arabia Mountain, that trail. That is what we desire. We're desiring things that help us to continue to grow and be healthy. I don't believe that the C store would add to less traffic. I don't believe that they will add to less pollution and littering. I don't believe that they are concerned with school-aged children that utilize the buses for transportation, the stopping and going in that particular area. I don't believe that a hazard truck going through a two-lane winding road is conducive to what we desire in our community. So I am strongly opposing the C store in the community, opposed at Salem Road and Evans Mill.
Thank you, Mayor.
Give you a moment to set the timer. The next speaker is Dave Kofield. Could you take one of these and pass it down, please? I'm gonna be ready in response to him.
Thank you very much. I'm getting each one of these votes so you can really understand the position I'm coming from. It's been a lot of talk about me and that I was opposed to a city that was a black city and all of that. I belonged to two churches my entire life. One of them was Second Baptist in Los Angeles, which was a home church, the west coast home of Baptist Church. During my lifetime, I've worked with everyone from the Black Panther Party, the original Black Panther Party in Los Angeles, to a group of nuns who were trying to help some migrant workers. I'm concerned about the direction that Stonecrest is taking. Stonecrest was supposed to be a city of pride and a city of modern development. But when I look at it, what we are doing is we are lowering the standard for what we had under the Cav County. We are putting in things that the Cav County turned down. The Cav County turned down that C store, and most people that have been in that area know that they turned it down. They turned it down because it wasn't conducive with neighborhood. We gave each one of you, and I'm gonna leave Dr. Adoma out of this because she has tried to help. I have asked you guys repeatedly about the trees that have taken down in my neighborhood. I've given you proof that the Cav County came out and issued a stop work order, but still it exists. I've asked you guys to at least look at what's going on in our community, to go over to Hosea Williams, to go over to the new Crowborough off of Moritzland, and see what they're doing. But instead, you wanna lower the development, you wanna make sure that we're inundated with gas stations, that we're inundated with rooming houses, and that we're inundated with a cell phone tower that I can't understand. I've lived in some of the most corrupt cities in the world, including Chicago. And trust me, Chicago would not have with that type of zoning for a Raggedy Ann and Andy Daycare Center for 22 days a year would not have allowed that to come in there. Now, you guys can do what you want to do, but I'm gonna tell you like this, I'm very troubled about it. And I remember two things. Number one, I'm writing a paper on the Black Panther, the movie. There were three characters in the Black Panther. One was Killmonger, who when he got the power, he destroyed the neighborhood and everything else. There was Chachala, who worked hard to keep his neighborhood intact. And then, there was, of course, the Abakto, who when he saw trouble, he stood up and fought for his community and came and helped the people. And there was Makia, who tried to make things work. So I have to ask you, which one of those characters are you going to be in our community? Are you going to be a... Are you gonna be a cop? Makia, you need to protect us. We gave you the best that the Cav had to offer, and now all you're doing is destroying it.
All right, our next speaker is Ken Kelly.
Mr. Vayer, City Council, thank you for having me. Thank you for discussing the cell phone tower and talking about the potential removal of the cell phone tower. I'm here to talk about this issue. We discovered this conditional zoning document about a month ago. It's very clear that this tower was erected illegally. It's very clear that the applicant did not disclose this information. It's very clear that the applicant took advantage of this situation where a new city was being formed, and used that as an opportunity to put in a application for a cell phone tower installation that they knew that it wasn't zoned properly. This is not a residential cell phone tower. This doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood. This is a 199-foot-tall cell phone tower. It is a commercial-grade cell phone tower. It's going in next to, well, it has gone in next to a playground and a couple of subdivisions. And, you know, I just can't believe that we haven't pulled permit on this and stopped this project and asked them to remove this tower. This is a clear document, a clear-cut case of fraud on part of the applicant. I'm not into politics, and so I'm sorry if I'm picking rotten feathers, but that's just the way I feel about it. I think that this neighborhood deserves better, that the community deserves better, and that we as a whole community should care for everyone here, no matter where they live. If they live up near I-20, we should care about them. If they live down near Arabia Mountain, we should care about them. We should apply the law in equal and equitable fashion, no matter where it is. If property isn't zoned correctly for this type of development, the development shouldn't go in there, and it should be reviewed correctly and honestly so that everybody in the community gets treated fairly. The property owner gets treated fairly because they have a right to use their property for the way their property is owned. When they buy that piece of property, if they don't research the zoning correctly and they put up an illegal structure, if it was me, I'd be asked to take it down. If it's T-Mobile, I don't know if there's a T-Mobile lobbyist here tonight, if it's them, they should be asked to take it down just like I would. We shouldn't be treated any differently just because one is a multimillion-dollar corporation and somebody else is just a private citizen. I thank you for your time, and I thank you for considering a moratorium on more cell phone towers, and I thank you for considering also a legal decision on this issue because we do need to know where the city stands on this. Is the city gonna keep it? Are they with the developer, or are they with us?
Who you with?
The next speaker is Willie Hinton.
Good evening, Mayor and the council members. My name's Willie Hinton, and I represent the communities on Evans Mill Road, Salem Road, and Rock Springs Road. And I rise to comment on and oppose the project for the junction of Evans Mill Road and Salem Road. We're talking about degrading the neighborhood seriously. And I want to add to the comments of those who preceded me. Quality of life was being impacted, decreased property values, traffic movement at that junction and that vicinity at the present time is just horrible. I want to call for some assistance when I drive Salem Road to Evans Mill Road and have to turn left. That is not good. So the issue has been lifted up, and I'm here to support it. And also, in response to my neighbor, Ms. Kofield, I want to, after some rehearsal, I wanna play the part of that third character in Black Panther.
Mayor, our next speaker is Gina Mann. One moment, please, while I set the timer. I'll just start. I just wanted to wish I gave as a moment of time to you. All right, I'm ready.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, just wanna follow up on the discussion in the work session regarding the upcoming DeCav County Mass Transit Plan. As you know, it is a comprehensive plan, and I just encourage you to keep an open mind. I am well aware that a lot of folks, not too many community folks, I think a couple went, went to Minneapolis and came back really just on the BRT bandwagon. And that's fine. If that's your decision, so be it. But I would encourage you to look at this much like your own comprehensive development plan and understand that if certain options or modes of transportation, such as rail, are not in the plan, then they will not be implemented. We keep hearing that heavy rail is not an option. I'm not ready to give up on that yet, and I think a lot of residents aren't either. When that county has rail in their plan, when they had rail go in just before the Olympics, it was amazing how quickly those stations went up. So before you make the final decision, I encourage you to actually look at a cost-benefit analysis. Keep your options open, and most of all, I hope you hold to your pledge that you will listen to the community, listen to what we want as a community before you make any final plans on what should be in that plan. Just keep an open mind and listen to us. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dave Marcus. Ready, Dave?
Good evening, all. The cell phone debacle was caused by an ordinance passed by the council, all of you, that allowed the administrative permit to be used in this case. There's been a lot of suggestions for remedies. Dr. Adoma suggested a new ordinance that would limit cell phone towers on the right of way. Also a suggestion to totally redo our zoning ordinances. I'm sure there are other suggestions as well. The problem is that the ordinance that you currently have passed, and by the way, I hope somebody is going through the other ordinances looking for time bombs like that one. I hope that's that one. But if the problem is that cell towers can be approved by a special administrative permit, instead of these pages and these thousands of dollars of attorney's time to review them and get them and the weeks and months it would take, how about just a small change that says, did I believe all that time? A real, it's a small change that just says administrative permits cannot be used for this any longer. And maybe they can't be used for the demolition of historic buildings any longer. Pick out some things, make small fixes that will have the maximum impact and the fastest impact, and get it done. That's all.
All right, our next speaker is Candy Line.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have my own timer. I'll start myself. I'm very familiar to you all, so I don't have to introduce myself. I do want to say again, my city has let me down. My brown and beige and mocha and chocolate vanilla city has let me down. Again, when I pass on Evans Mill and I see that Monopole Tower near the church, near my cut-through, near our little sanctuary, I am devastated to know that a red flag went up and nobody saw it, and nobody gave any consideration to it. Special is just that. It's not ordinary, so extra attention should have been given to it. And now, I come to the corner of Evans Mill and Salem Road, and I'm now concerned about seeing new silk fence that I know I didn't see. And there it is, and then I hear, and then I attend, and I look, and we're talking about, really? In the middle of eight acres, we're going to put a... What? Where are they coming? Can you imagine the potholes that are gonna be with that heavy truck coming down to deliver some gas? Can't do it. Won't sacrifice those children who are learning to drive, and I'm back on that again. That road, that intersection is dangerous for me. So you put in people running... So you put in people running in and out of a convenience store? Not going to stand for it in this area, not at all. Thoughts become things. And I've oftentimes thought that this was the place to be. Thoughts become things. Let me have my original thoughts, that this was going to be the best that Softecap had ever seen. Don't make me be embarrassed to say that I live in Stonecrest. I'm a ride or die for Stonecrest, but I refuse to sit back and allow anybody, mayor or council, think that we're not watching and that what you said, what you all took a vow to do, treat us like family? If this is how you do your family, scratch my bloodline.
The next speaker is Kelly.
Excuse me, sir. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and time myself, if that's okay with you. Okay. On three minutes, right? My name is Virginia Pierce Kelly, and I live at 3576 Heritage Estates, Stonecrest, Georgia, and I'm here to oppose the cellphone tower that's coming up at 3610 Evans Mill Road, Stonecrest, Georgia. And I would take a little different term than what a lot of people have. I went to Stonecrest website, and I pulled the charter, city charter, and in that city charter, it says SB 208, Senate Bill 208, and it says on line one, "To incorporate the city of Stonecrest into DeKalb County," and I'm going to drop down to verse two, I'm sorry, not verse, but to line six. I'm going to read some scriptures, too, if that's my. To line six, "Provide for organization," and line seven, "Procedure to provide for ordinances to provide for codes." Line 12, "To provide for ethics," and line 13, "Disclosures." Line 15, "To provide for the creation of a community improvement district." Then I go to page four, and this is on your website. I noticed you use the words "safety, health and safety" throughout the ordinance and through the city charter, and so it also mentions about ethics, that's line 112, and also in line 95, it says, "The ordinances shall include without limitation, ordinances that protect, maintain, and enhance the public health, safety, environment, and general welfare, and minimize public and private losses due to flood conditions and flood hazards areas, so forth and so on." Then I want to go to line 126, "General health and safety and welfare." You talk about here to define, regulate, and prohibit any ad, practice, conduct, or use of property which is detrimental to health, sanitation, cleanliness, welfare, and safety of inhabitants of the city. Now I want to go to line 127. It'll take me all day to read all this, but you've mentioned self-safety and health all through this city charter. Now I just want to briefly mention some research studies about the cellphone tower. It's two studies, one in Germany and one in Israel, says that basically a mobile phone cellphone tower will be radiation coming out of the cellphone tower, and also it says that newly developed cancers cases were three times higher among those who have been living through the past 10 years and a distance up to about 1,300 feet from the cellular transmitter site. Now that's a study in Germany, and I have about two seconds left. I'm out of time. Okay, you're right, I am. And I want to thank you so much for allowing me to talk. Thank you so much.
Mayor, city council, as always, it's an honor to speak to you. I want to briefly cover two points of information regarding what admittedly is a very dangerous topic, which is the cellphone towers. One is that I have not heard any discussion thus far in context with proposed new legislation dealing with smart cell or small cell, whatever it is, of the fact that there is pending right now in the General Assembly, Senate Bill 66, which was passed out of the Senate and is now pending in the House. It is entitled, "Streamlining Wireless Facilities and Antennas Act." And one of the stated purposes is to, quote, "to streamline the deployment of wireless broadband in the public rights of way." I haven't looked at it, I haven't looked at what's been proffered to you all as far as model legislation, but I imagine that there might be some impact on whatever is planned to be done in this city regarding wireless broadband due to this bill. This seems to be something that, just on the face of it, would favor the industry. The second thing I wanted to cover is, and again, I haven't heard any discussion of it, is the fact that there is a provision for public notice in our special administrative permit process for cellphone towers. I don't know whether it was followed here, but there is a provision. It says that once the director of planning issues the permit for the cellphone tower, then the director is required to post a sign at the property notifying the public that this has been issued, and at that point, and also that the public has a right to appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals within 30 days. That's a very, very important thing, very powerful, that is notice. I wanted to make sure that that point was made, that this is not a process where everything is behind the scenes and everything is done on an administrative level. Once the permit is issued, under our code, the director goes out to the property, posts a sign within 10 days, and then the public has 30 days thereafter. So I would say to the folks who are looking at this particular cellphone tower at 3610 Evans Mill Road, that is a point that they need to take into consideration. And let me hasten to add, I don't represent anybody in this particular issue. I'm not an advocate for the cellphone tower industry, and I don't intend to represent anybody. I felt that that was an important point of information, though, for everybody to have. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Renee Carl.
My name is Renee Carl. I am president of Citizens for Health and Safety and Environment. We've done a lot of things to try to keep our community healthy and safe. The proposed gas station and C-store will not keep us healthy and safe. When Stonecrest transitioned into a city, I don't understand why somebody didn't take note of the C-1 zoning for that property at Evans Mill and Salem Road. To put a C-store there would devastate our community, literally kill it. The underground tanks explode, they leak, and the problem here also is that who's going to monitor them? We weren't given notice, and whoever signed our building permit application, you need to get some new glasses, because the application is a mess. There's information missing from it, and don't get me wrong, Citizens for Health and Safety and Environment does not go against good economic development. We want viable businesses, we want jobs for our people, and we want non-polluting industries. We don't know how many acres they're going to disturb, we don't really know who owns the land. I did an open record request, I got three pieces of paper, and none of it made sense. We don't want benzines, triethylene, all these things that are in the gas that disturb your nervous system, literally kill you. Have you heard about the crime that gas stations bring? Robberies, carjackings, that sliding, when you put your card in the machine, your card is gone, the babies are gone. We don't want it, and if you all can't fight for us to get rid of it, we'll do it on our own. Thank you.
I'm here to voice my opinions for the C-store, gas store slated for the Salem Road, Evans Mill subdivision. I live in the Hartville subdivision, and that spot is right directly behind my subdivision. I think it would be dangerous to put such a gas station, C-store there for our children. That intersection is already dangerous. Our own daughter had an accident there at that intersection. So something needs to be done to pull this permit and stop this owner from building this in our neighborhood. It's going to make the value of our houses go down, it's going to degrade the quality of our life, and something needs to be done. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Ziegler, and, first of all, I want to compliment you for March is Women's Month, and so you honored women, and we were not surprised. Congratulations, women. You started also talking about history. I'm a 32-year resident of this area, and so let me tell you a little bit about some history. This was supposed, this area was supposed to or proposed to be perimeter south when I moved into my community, to the point where the fire station at Evans Mill was housed with equipment to put out high-rise building fires. African-American people move in, and that was squashed. We went on for 16 years begging for what we have now, Stonecrest. Next promise, hundreds of communities, chattel, swimming tennis community, black people moving, African-Americans moving in, no swimming tennis, to the point where over half the community was built, and we even kept insisted to have it built, and now it has impacted us because now homeowners could not be mandatory for the swimming tennis because it wasn't put in appropriately. Again, promises made. City of Stonecrest, wow, great opportunity. Number one black city in how many times, or years, or whatever it is. Heard that from you, I heard that from everyone. We voted for it. Promises made, a sports center. Promises made, by you, not there, okay? I'm here to talk about this gas station. 32 years I have lived here and will continue to do so. That's my legacy. No, I built my house, no one else has lived in it, and I will be there till I die. But what I'm saying is to lower our things for our city that we were promised and we uplifted, and here's an opportunity, and we are doing this to ourselves? This is sad. This is very, very sad. It cannot happen. It cannot happen. Arabian Mountain Trail is right there, the creek that runs behind my house and goes into this beautiful waterfall and so forth. Gas station, tanks, what? It is unacceptable, totally unacceptable. If we really want to talk about Stonecrest, we really want to make this city, we have the opportunity to put promises to the side and make them come true. Shouldn't be dreams, should be a plan. You talked about your comprehensive plan. How are we doing things and we don't know for the lines? You haven't even met to discuss the comprehensive plan while we're making plans over here. So you're going to mess up to fit it in? That's not the way a puzzle works. That's not the way we do things, and it's not the way we should be doing things. I have recently retired from DeKalb County School District after 32 years in DeKalb, 37 years totally. I am retired, and I will be here on giving support, watch, make sure this does not happen, and that we keep the promises that we've made to the citizens to make Stonecrest the city that it we know it can be. Thank you so very much.
I really feel for you because you got your plate full. However, we have not talked about rights consulting, and that contract has not been signed to my knowledge, but however, regardless to what experts have said to you guys, to the ones that voted for it, to your constituents, I've not heard anyone come up here and say, "Please do this." You guys have dug in and decided this is a vendor that, in my opinion and others, is not qualified for the work. You're talking about spending $3.7 million of our taxes to someone who may or may not, you know, know what they're doing? This is not OJT. This is serious money, and you guys really need to think about what you're doing. You know, one of the things, and I live by, you live and die by the decisions you make. So if you guys decide that you're going to move forward and do this, know that if you're in politics, it's a nasty game, it's going to follow you like a bad cold. People will know that you voted to give away taxpayer dollars more than we needed to, I might add, and you totally disregarded the advice of the people who voted you in, as well as the experts who do this on a daily basis. So I would request, ask nicely, that you really and truly think about what you're doing before you put your name to this contract. Thank you.
I come before you today, I really just have two requests. I really want to echo things that my neighbors are saying, and I request, one, moratorium on development until proper city structure can be established. That's going to be in reference to the 5987 Salem Road address, where they're putting in the C-store, convenience store, whatever you want to call it. The second one is, I call to remove the cell tower at 3610 Evans Mill Road and halt future towers in residential areas. It's really just one main, well, two main points that you want to drill home. We want to have the proper city structure in place, because if there were no issues with either one of these things, and the city structure were in place, we wouldn't be having so many people opposed to it. I think that me only being a resident of Stonecrest for only one year, that doesn't impact my passion, it doesn't impact my opinion on it, or doesn't devalue the fact that I really don't think this should be here, especially the service station. I don't know how many of you all drive past this area on a daily basis like I do, but if anyone behind me noticed what happened to drive by there on Saturday afternoon or Saturday night, there was an accident at this very location. The sign that was there that noted it was dead end, it's no longer there. There was a truck pulled off, not pulled off, ran off the side of the road. All I see is the bed of the truck. So if that's happening with just regular passenger vehicles, imagine what you would have with tanks that hauling gas. Thank you for your time.
My name is Idonia Hunter. I live at 6308 Serenity Cove. I've been there for 12 years. And the reason that we chose Stonecrest, well, like Idonia at the time, to move because of the beautification. I am one of the ones that volunteered for keep DeKalb clean and beautiful. I've done that for 32 years, because to me, the most important thing in any city is the cleansiness, okay? That's what attracts businesses, we say thriving businesses. And when picking up litter, when I saw this tall thing, which is the cellphone tower going up, it disturbed me very much, because my family, my grandkids, it's so important, their quality of life, our quality of life, everyone's quality of life, and not only that, but the fact that our homes, that's the biggest investment that we're going to make in a lifetime. we're gonna make in a lifetime. And for your home to deteriorate, you know, then what you look for? So my thing is, everything that's coming up along the C store, that's on the corner, that's also come on the corner, you know, I just oppose all of it. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Goodwin.
Good evening, everybody. Um, I'm not gonna take three minutes, just probably about two. My husband and I, we moved over here in 2016. We moved from the Campbell Creek area because we found our dream home, a beautiful home right on Evans Mill Road. This house, we put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into. It was a fixer-upper. We spent a whole year fixing this house up. Me and my husband frequently walk our dog down Evans Mill Road in Spring Lake. So the one day when we noticed this path off of Evans Mill Road, my husband who runs, I don't, but my husband who runs, ran up this path only to come back to tell me that we have now a cell phone tower that we absolutely knew nothing about. That is not acceptable. Now, when we moved into a community where we expected more, we voted for this city. We wanted more from the city. And what angers me more than anything is that we feel like we're walking this walk alone. We feel like, are we, why are we mad? Why, I mean, I don't get the same level of, of, of passion from everyone up there. I don't. And I said this to my husband, had it been me, and this happened on my watch, and if I were mayor, or if I was a city council member, and this happened on my watch, there's no way that my feathers wouldn't be more ruffled than yours are. I just don't understand that. We deserve more. We all deserve more. Our house is our biggest investment. Now, the idea of it going down in value because of a cell phone tower across the street from my house, and a convenience store that we don't need, that's unacceptable.
Doris Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and city council members, and to my neighbors and friends from all over the city of Stonecrest. I'm Doris Johnson. I am president of the Hunters Communities Homeowners Association. Three communities, Hunters Chase, Base, and Eel. Approximately 250 residents in that area. And on their behalf, as well as mine, I'm here to oppose the construction of a convenience store, gas station, whatever else is preliminarily approved for that site. I will agree with all of the prior speakers that, and especially the, you know, Ms. Gail from Chase, about the health and environmental and safety issues along that route, that we will not stand for. I mean, I think we all are fired up enough, and as old as I am, I didn't plan to be in the streets much, but I will be if need be, that you guys have got to listen to the residents in this area. As support. Liquor, beer, soft drinks. I go to the store and buy my stuff in supply. I don't have to run in every now and then. But the main thing I want to drive about that intersection, I fear for my life every time I go down there and have to mix that stuff. All right? So here's the thing, that with the winding roads, now I know it was property zoned a long time ago, all right? Look at this zone, let's look at changing this on. And I'm not here just to complain or oppose something. So I've got a proposed resolution for you, all right? The city of Stonecrest should acquire that property, from whatever zone to whatever, take it into the city's lot of properties. Widen Evans Mill Road. Make appropriate turning lanes at Salem and Evans Mill, and wherever else there need to be for all of the subdivisions that were built down on the south end. I'm sure that was zoned commercial too, but the bill has got to change to residential. We want all of that residential. So I'm saying for the city to acquire that property, widen Evans Mill Road, make appropriate turning lanes, put a traffic light at Evans Mill and Salem Road, first of all. And then you can use that for green space. Expand those areas for access to the walking trails across the street there, and all of that area, and make it a beautification thing that, that adheres to and, and really honors our need for safety and health. I'm getting older, and I ain't looking for nothing to shorten my life that I don't do, okay? Think about us. We're the residents. We ain't going nowhere. We bought into this area and built in this area because this is where we wanted to be. I can remember my sister asking me when I moved back from the northern end, coming back home, why do you want to go there? And I said, well, it's all black or whatever. And I said, yeah, but we're used to other communities. And she told me, she said, uh, we didn't live here and moved here by choice.
Three minutes left.
All right? So I ask you to look at that and honor our considerations for that area. Thank you.
Sharon Benson.
Good evening, Mayor, and fellow council members. Thank you so much for having me this evening. My nerves are with me this evening, but I want to drive home a point here, and I'm trying to understand, and by no means do I have a political ground. I'm a stakeholder. I have an investment in my community. I'm just trying to understand this process. The conditional zoning for the cell, the cell phone tower at 3610 Evans Mill Road is very clear that that conditional zone was in place for Raggedy Ann and Andy Daycare Center. It's very clear in black and white on your websites. What I don't understand, there is no expiration date that's attached to that condition, which means it still remains in effect unless otherwise specified. I have searched every website, I have called planning and sustainability, there is no expiration date attached to that condition. Therefore, whether the landowners change, that condition still carries with that land. And what needed to be filed by Vertical Bridge was a variance, not an additional special administration permit, because it doesn't conform to what was originally approved. There is no variance permit that was filed by Vertical Bridge. Because its, its proposal was to build a structure that was outside of what was originally approved. This is all information that is clear in black and white. And what I'm not understanding is why our council is silent. Your residents are. We are afraid. We are afraid because we don't know what else is coming. We voted you in to protect our interests. Don't silence our voices now because you have the power. Don't break the laws or ignore the laws because there's money attached. Our quality of life doesn't carry a price. It doesn't carry a price. Are we sending a message that monetary gain stands over the quality of life of your constituents that stay here, play here, worship here, work here? Let's stand in unity and make this a place that we love. Have transparency with the people who voted you in.
I'm gonna finish, that concludes it.
Okay. So. We went, um, we went longer than what we normally go, but I wanted everybody to have their say. I wanted everybody to know that their say is important. So this is what we're gonna do. Couple of things, and I'll be asking council. Three things are gonna happen here this evening. One, um, I'm gonna ask for an executive session, for council, for the purpose of potential litigation, personnel, and real estate. Yes. Second, well, let's finish that business first. I'm gonna need a second on that. All right? Got two seconds. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Then we're gonna go into the executive session, because I don't know how long that's gonna take. Let me, let me, let me tell you what's on my mind. Now, there are a couple of, three things, and I just want to give it back to you the way I see it also. One is that, uh, my wife and I have been out here 33 years also. We've seen that, we've seen it come from the dirt. So we are, are very sensitive to everything that is happening here. So the two things I'm gonna ask council, so that you won't have to wait in suspense while we're handling some other business, is one is that, um, I am gonna ask for a moratorium on cell phone, on towers. And at the same time, uh, we're gonna continue our, uh, we're gonna give our city attorney the correct amount of time to find out exactly where we sit and stand with regards to the current hour. So the reason I want you all to, to be sensitive to that is that we are listening to you as, as council and mayor, um, but you do have to understand, there's some legal ramifications also that come across the board. So we have to be, we have to be fair about that. Uh, the second thing is that, um, I heard enough on this C store piece at Salem Road. I've, I've traveled that along with my wife a million times on that corner. I know exactly where it is and what we're talking about. Um, I'm going to ask that I, and I'll put this, if he doesn't mind, I'll, I'll be putting him on the spot, but we, I mean, this is what it is. I'd ask that George Turner and I get together and find out where do we need to go to to make it stop. What I want you all to know is for every action, there's a reaction with regards to the people that we have to deal with. Because I don't want the same people to come to the microphone and say, why have you entered us into a lawsuit? Because it's, it's coming. And, and, and I know some of you are saying, well, I don't care about that. Sure you do. Sure you do. Uh, just understand that, um, um, you know, if, if you don't mind, ma'am, I can't remember your name, I'll take a piece from you with regards to this, uh, sports complex. That is a prime example of the city supporting whatever development growth that we can. And it's not promises by us. We can only turn around and give you the information that the developer, the developer is giving us, and we want, you know, we want those special things to come out. You know, I, I want to take my wife to Marjionos, where I'm driving on the other side of town, or Cheesecake Factory where the black folks, absolutely standing up Cheesecake Factory. You can go there, there's never not a two-hour wait. So I don't want to give, or you don't even have the impression, um, that we don't want the things that you want, because we do want exactly what you want. That's why we, that's why we put this together. Um, we hear you. Uh, I, I agree with you, and, um, I'm not a man that just moves my lips. And I, I hope that you all know that by now. Uh, so we will do something about it. And, um, we will go for executive session. Uh, you all can talk about it from here, but I don't want you all waiting in the lurch, thinking that, you know, what are you doing back there? We just have this, this sitting out here. We have, we have some business to handle, and I need, uh, Mr. Thibodeau, um, uh, Patron Thomas, and, um, Mr. Jordan, and Mr. Bell, the Jonas. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, do we have to move?
Especially when you return to your council. All right? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Adoption of the city council agenda. Got a couple of, three items that we're going to add, um, under new business. We will add alarm ordinance. We will add fire prevention ordinance. We will add a resolution for water and sewer. And we will add a moratorium on future cell towers. Council, do you have any other adjustments?
One other adjustment, I'd like to add notification on special permits. I'd like to add to the agenda notification of special administrative permits. The reason being is the C store is not covered under the moratorium.
You have to change this, council. So you know, I'll take a motion for the adoption of the city council agenda.
I make a motion to adopt the, the agenda with all of the designated additions, the alarm, the fire, the water and sewers, the cell tower, and notification on special administrative permits.
Second. Probably move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Whole business, number one, Spouse Project Services.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir. All right.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, let me.
Move for the parole.
Second.
All right. All in favor for the parole? All opposed? All right, number two, come here to change place plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Make a motion that we defer it.
All right.
A second.
Probably move in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Defer it. And number three, work plan approval. Were we looking at a chart that we need to approve or look at on what regards to the chart? Has everyone seen the differences in the charts?
Mr. Mayor, can someone please clarify what are the differences in the chart we have versus the previous chart?
I'm gonna have to turn that over to. Mr. Warren.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure I can identify every distinct. As you know, the, the, the chart that's in front of you and the agenda back, it was developed from the retreat, and it represents the goals that, that you folks set in consultation with the staff, and the staff was trying to flesh out those, those goals and put them into a work plan so they're guided by quarters. I'm not prepared to minimize the differences between this year's and last year's. I can certainly get a copy of the one from last year.
And it's not necessary. It's not necessary.
Mr. Jones.
If you could repeat the question.
I think you may have answered it. The work plan approval is quite a bit on there, so my question is, is there anything on there that maybe is highly significant that is a change from the old work plan approval to the new one? Just some key highlights. If there aren't any, then that's fine too. I just want, I just need to know.
And just for clarification from the old one, you mean from the one last year?
Yes.
Okay. So the main difference between the 2018 and the 2019 annual work plan that was developed is basically we have a significant, larger number of departments now. So we have more people actually doing the work. And so actually, the work plan itself is just a compendium of all of those folks, all the goals and their tasks that they plan to accomplish this year. And in addition to what we did last year, there weren't as many people working at the dump, so there weren't as many departments. So that's why it's much larger. Last year, if you may recall, when you received it, the entire year was on one page. This year, we now have thirteen, basically thirteen departments that are listed on here. And so the decision was made to put each quarter on a page by itself. So that way it'd be easier to read, the fonts will be a little bit larger, and so that way you can give a more closely and easily track what's going on within each quarter and by each department.
Well, I have a couple of questions. I asked a question last time, and I think Michael gave me an answer, and I couldn't find it if this was in a different format. And he said it was on a spreadsheet. Where do I find that spreadsheet?
Okay. What we did is each department, we have a basic template, it's in spreadsheet form, and each department fills out their spreadsheet for their department with all of their goals and stuff on it. And then what we do is using that spreadsheet, we have a way to keep track of how far each person has gone with respect to their goals. So this is just a, lack of a better term, a manifestation of that spreadsheet in visual format so that you can easily see what the goals are for each quarter.
If I wanted to look at that spreadsheet, do I have to go to the East Department to get that?
No, no, no. What we do is we actually have that compiled into one master spreadsheet, and we update that on a monthly basis.
And come see you?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And actually, this, as Michael was sending those out on a monthly basis. And so as soon as we get everything together and finalize this, then we'll be getting sent those out on a monthly basis to you.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'll take a motion to approve the work plan. Probably approved and second.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that we approve the work plan and submit it.
All right, second. Probably approved and second. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The DeKalb Municipal Annual Dues. Folks, that is the amount that we, I saw it posted on the amount, I just happened to remember it was thirty-four thousand two hundred or something like that.
Thirty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-five.
Oh, man. There you go. How that ages on the size of the city with regards to our participation, and it funds the DeKalb Municipal Association, and that's our part of the dues. They waived it last year for us as a first year city, so we didn't have to pay last year, but we do have to pay this year. Any questions with regards to payment or...
Just a question, how is that seventy cents for resident chairman?
That formula, they've had that for eight years, yeah. We're close in line, of course, with Brookhaven, Dunwoody, we're all in that same rate because of a, I don't know. I don't know why they can't do it either. That's my charges.
Let me just...
Yes, sir.
Have a comment. One thing that this group provided for us is resources for some travel and just general resources on city operation and a chance to network with other cities in the DeKalb County. And it's been beneficial. And to also point out that this year, the president of the DeKalb Municipal Association is our mayor, Mr. Jason Leno.
I appreciate that. All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. On that high note, I move it with you. Pay the affirmative amount. Do I have a second?
Mr. Warren, make a second. I have a question for the city attorney.
You need the second first.
I second it.
All right, discussion. Now you can go, Ms. Don.
Question for Attorney Denmark. First of all, a question for the counsel. If someone serves on the board and we're voting on a financial disbursement, what does the rule say? Do they have to recuse themselves? This is a financial disbursement to DMA.
It's not a...
So...
That would be some IGA maybe?
I'm asking if someone serves on a board and we're voting for a financial disbursement to go to any organization, doesn't matter who they are, it's going to an organization and someone serves on the board up here. So I need a quick legal opinion on that.
No, ma'am, neither. I don't have to recuse. It's not a personal, you recuse yourself, you have a personal gain or a personal interest, and this is certainly not personal to any member of council list for a civic organization that does not benefit the mayor or any particular council member personally. So he would not have to recuse.
And where is that in the charter?
It's not in the charter, ma'am.
Okay, where, what law, how can you quote the Georgia law that you're referencing?
You're asking me for my opinion and how, and based on a...
But it needs to be documented.
Mr. Don, if you want my opinion tonight, I give it to you. If you want me to give you a written legal opinion and a thoroughly researched, present to you in writing, I'm happy to do that.
So right now, you can't quote any Georgia law or any specific section in the charter that confirms your opinion?
Okay. So having said that, that was the discussion part. Does I have a motion on the floor? It's been properly seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes. I would like to make a motion that we defer this until we get my question and answer with the proper documentation. I'd like to make that motion.
So, you would have to have a substitute motion with regards to that. Then it have to be seconded and then see if it passes. So are you making a substitute motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'm making a substitute motion that we defer the DeKalb Municipal Annual Dues until our legal counsel can provide me with the Georgia law or something in the charter that confirms his opinion.
All right, there's a substitute motion on the table. Is there a second? There is no second. It fails. We'll wait till the original motion. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Passes. We move to new business. We'll take the first read on the alarm ordinance.
Mayor, this is an ordinance of the city of Stonecrest, Georgia, chapter three, alarm systems of the city code. It's essentially the connotation of the alarm system and it's based on our IGA of the county.
Right. So red, is there any questions from counsel? Seeing none, we recognize that, Mr. City Attorney, it's first read.
Yes.
All right. We'll move to the fire prevention ordinance.
Mayor, an ordinance of the city of Stonecrest is about in the, about in chapter twelve, fire prevention and protection of the city code. Same first read of this ordinance, and it's based on our IGA of the county.
All right. Counsel, any questions from the city attorney? Seeing none? First reading, second. Our next resolution for water and sewer.
Mr. Mayor, this is essentially a resolution that's required by state law in order for us to resolve to continue to receive those services from the county, and we are, county has to accept this within a certain, I can't remember, it was thirty days, and they can continue to provide those services to the city.
All right, so that takes a first read also.
No, Mr. Mayor, this is a, this is a resolution.
All the resolution, there you go.
Not a water degree, but we can vote it up or down.
All right. Counsel, are there any questions for the city attorney?
Not for the city, but I guess it'll be for you. All of the water in Stonecrest comes from DeKalb County, you know?
I believe that's correct. It's a technical question that...
Yeah, that was... Just in case you find that some of it comes from someplace else, we'll have to...
I get mine away from the cap.
Mr. City Attorney, do you have a...
No, I'll take it.
Do you have to prepare a resolution or you have it?
I thought it was in your package. You don't have it in here.
Okay, yes.
Work session.
Okay. Counsel, are you all okay with...
Mr. Mayor, I just, I move that we adopt your resolution.
All right, probably moved. You have a second?
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes. Moratorium on future cell towers.
Yes.
Mr. Don.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the counsel to pass a resolution for a moratorium on cell towers in the city of Stonecrest. The moratorium can be thirty, sixty, or ninety days, or even sooner, depending on when we flush out the legalities.
All right, then I will make the motion for counsel to have a sixty-day moratorium on cell phones until we completely discover all of us have...
Cell phones or cells?
Cell towers.
Let's do cell phones.
Have a good day, man.
But second?
Cell towers.
Who second?
I second.
Do we get a second?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, does this also, is the other item a separate item or is it part of...
It's a separate item.
Okay, thank you.
So in regards to this item, I would ask, as a, I know I'm gonna get rocks thrown at me, but instead of a moratorium, I would suggest that we direct the city attorney to put together the proper terms and wording for such a moratorium as he offered in our work session. And that seems to me that would be the proper move, as I don't even know how it would work this, you know?
Mr. Counselman, legally, a moratorium is only effective once it's reduced to writing. So the vote tonight is certainly significant, however, before a moratorium can take effect, it has to be in writing. So the first opportunity for you to vote on an actual written moratorium would be at our next meeting unless you have the meeting, in the intermediate time. And so I will prepare it and present it, and it will take effect all once that's voted and executed.
Right. So, you know, in fact, you're saying pretty much the same thing I'm saying. I mean, because even if we voted on it tonight, and we still have to wait for you, but they got to compose it, and bring it back to us again for us to relook at it, because right now, we don't really know what we're voting on.
Well, you're exactly right.
I mean, we know it exists, but not really.
And I, what I will do is certainly present it to you well in advance at the next meeting so you would have an opportunity to review it. And so by the time the next meeting comes around, you'll be ready to take, take action as opposed to just consider it for the first time at that meeting.
And what I, I want to make a substitute motion that we give the city attorney the authority to put the written document together for a sixty-day moratorium for future cell towers. Do you have a second?
Can we finish our discussion on the first motion? We haven't finished our discussion on the first motion. I have some discussion on the first motion.
So what has ended up happening, Counselor, is that you can make a substitute motion, even if it's not finished on the first part of it, it's been properly seconded, and then now there is a vote with regards to the substitute motion.
Okay, according to Roberts' rules, we were in discussion on the first motion, Mr. Mayor. That's according to Roberts' rules. And I would like to follow the rules that we voted on, which allows discussion on the first motion.
I think I'm following the rules properly unless, Mr. City Attorney...
But we're on the first motion.
Unless, tell me, and I'm doing it in an airway.
Mayor, I believe you had the floor, and you made a substitute motion. I do not think you were out of order.
You think what? I'm sorry?
I do not think you were out of order in making a substitute motion.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Substitution, substitute motion made and second. And that again was for the city attorney to properly draft the paperwork with regards to having a sixty-day moratorium. It's been properly moved in second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I apologize, Mr. Mayor. We're now in the discussion part of the substitute motion. Thank you, Councilman Turner.
Do I have the floor?
Well, it's open for discussion on the substitute motion.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to get a feel, when you say, go to the next meeting, so if an application comes in between now and then, we're bound to entertain it. That's what I understand.
Yes, sir. Until the moratorium is in effect, it's not.
Okay. Can you please... I'm having lots of issues with this, Mr. Attorney. First of all, and for my colleague, Councilman Clad, a moratorium is simply a delay, very common in government.
I absolutely understand.
I just wanna say that that's what...
If you, you invoked my...
Can you please not interrupt me?
You invoked my, announcing my name. So I understand what a moratorium is. So basically, all we're saying, all of us saying since you invoked me, was that we can't have a moratorium if we don't know what it is.
Point of order, Mr. Attorney. Can I finish my comment? Under Roberts' rules, I said point of order. Can I finish my comment? The question is, I clarified what a moratorium is. It's a delay. The question I have goes back to Councilman Turner, is if the attorney is saying that the moratorium won't take effect until he puts the documents together, then my question is, how long is it gonna take him to put the documents together? And what happens in the process in the city if we continue to get these special administrative permits that are similar to the ones that the constituents had concerns about? And what happens in the process? And I understand another cell tower possibly is going up in Stonecrest. So my question is, requesting a delay is a disservice to the citizens of Stonecrest. If we're voting on something tonight, surely things can sit in a pending mode while you put that together? Because then what you're doing, you're opening the floodgates for those types of projects to continue to come into Stonecrest, because you're saying the moratorium has no meaning until you put the documents together. And if that is the case, I am recommending that we put the special administrative permits and cell towers in a pending mode until you get the documents together. Otherwise, you're opening us up to get the same type of projects, and there's nothing we can do about it.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, Counselman, I'm not opening you up to anything. I'm not an elected official, and I don't have the ability to open you up to anything. To the extent there was an urgency about a moratorium, the counsel could have instructed me to prepare one at the last meeting, and it could have been ready at this meeting. So I do as I'm asked to do, and I have nothing to ask to do. And I'm not saying that the moratorium is not effective until it's reduced to writing. The Georgia Supreme Court is saying that the moratorium is not effective until it's reduced to writing, and it's not. And so we can vote, and you can take whatever action you wanna take tonight. I'm telling you that no moratorium in the state of Georgia is effective unless and until it's reduced to writing, and that's not a Winston Demokr... And that's not Winston Demark on moratoriums, that's the Georgia Supreme Court on moratoriums. And so I'm happy to prepare one, and I'll bring it back for the next meeting, or or whenever the council meets again, it'll be in order, in writing, and you'll be free to vote on it. You'll have it well in advance of the meeting, um, and, and you can vote on it. And once it's reduced to writing, it'll be effective.
Then what is the plan? What is the plan in the interim? Help me understand, what is the plan to provide proper notification to the council, uh, by way of transparency? How do we know between now and when this moratorium comes by, what happens in the interim? Who is notifying the council of a special administrative permit? Who's notifying us about a cell tower? Another cell tower, which I'm being told is going up in Stonecrest? Who is going to notify us? Because now, there are, I've been told, that no notification is required. Unless you can tell me how I'm gonna get notified, I'm against any type of delay on a moratorium and on notification of a special administrative permit.
So this is what we'll do. We're still in the discussion, um, section uh, with regards to the substitute motion. And in this, this discussion session, section, what I will do is that, um, since in effect that Mr. Wayne Wright and I are, are co-handling the duties of the, um, city manager position until we have an interim person, um, which will be shortly, um, we will notify council of any, uh, special permits, but particularly, uh, cell phones. So that, um, council will know, and I'll make that, I'll make that known with the, um, community development director. And so that, uh, there won't be any gap in notification while the city attorney develops the, uh, proper written piece to, to make happen. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I would be remiss in my apologies if I didn't say one, one other thing.
Correct.
The cell phone towers are, are, I guess, concurrent regulation between, um, local governments and the federal government. And the federal government regulates pursuant to the Telecommunications Act nineteen ninety-six, which is a ponderous, oppressive document that scarcely respects the rights of local governments. And so, um, I draft a moratorium that's consistent with federal law and with our limited ability to act uh, under federal law. We don't have a free hand. Um, as you know, the Federal Communications Commission, um, uh, regulates, uh, and has promulgated rules that, that, that govern in this area. And so we have to craft our legislation within a broader federal framework, which preempts our local ordinances and, and moratoriums. So I just want the council to be aware that we don't have an entirely free hand. And I may have mentioned at a previous meeting that some local communities have fought against um, the five G rollout across the country, the small cell, um, kind of onslaught against local communities. And they're deep in the federal court. They're at the United States Court of Appeals for the Tenth Circuit right now. It's the city of New York and the city of Seattle, Washington. And so I just want us to be aware of, of the landscape, the legal landscape that we're operating in. And I don't want to give the false notion that we have a free hand. And as we will do our absolute best to craft us an enforceable, uh, moratorium within the broader framework of federal law.
Okay, I have a question. So, um, the mayor said he'll make sure that the council gets notified. Please help me understand, what is that process and why can't we just simply pass a policy for notification? Or, uh, as, um, one of the public commenters, um, said tonight, he believes that what we have in place, if I understand him correct, it requires notification. So why can't we just enforce what we have on the book? Or someone tell me how we will be notified? Are you gonna email us? Are you gonna call us? What does that look like?
Okay, I'll tell you how it looks like. So, um, still in discussion mode, active motion on the table. Is that, um, I will find out from our community development director, um, if there are any pending, uh, applications for cell phones, uh, cell phones, cell towers. I can't get the cell phones. I don't mind. Uh, these cell towers. And, um, uh, Ms. Doja should be easily able to give me that answer along with our, um, city planner, Mr. Curtis Wheeler. So it's, it's, uh, there's not a big thing for cell phone towers popping up all over town. Either we're gonna know about them or not. So it'll be easy to find out. So with that, uh, I will take the responsibility of sending the notification to council. Um, and I'll watch it, I'll watch it personally.
Um, Mr. City Attorney, um, have you, um, have you ever drawn up paperwork for a moratorium? Uh, yes or no?
Um, I don't ask questions like that. If you want me to answer the question, I can...
Okay, go ahead.
Over the last thirty years, my law firm has probably done two hundred moratoriums for the cities that we represent across the state. At this point, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna call for a vote.
How long will it take you then?
One question, Mr. Mayor.
How long will it take you to draw up the papers for the moratorium since you've done two hundred of them? How, how long will it take?
That's your last question, Councilwoman.
I get ten minutes under Roberts' rules, and I'd like to take...
Call the question, again, Mr. Attorney.
Point of order, point of order.
Answer that, we're gonna ask a question.
I get ten minutes, I get ten minutes for discussion, under Roberts' rules.
You just make up the rules as you go.
That is a Roberts' rule.
You don't know what you're talking about. So having said that...
Mr. City Attorney, I'm point of order. Can you please, can you please let the mayor know? What does Roberts' rules say? I have the floor and I have ten minutes, and I haven't used two of them yet.
Yeah, you won't be using the other eight tonight.
I have the floor. It's, Mr. Mayor, you're violating the meeting rules.
One, one last answer.
I, I, I can...
It is not one last answer. I have other questions. And I have ten minutes and she can time me. City clerk, will you please time?
Mr. Mayor, point of order, uh, call for a question.
Point of order.
Call, call, we'll call for the question. All in favor? Show, raise your hand.
Aye.
All opposed? We can call it. Alright, we're, 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 for the substitute motion, for the subs... Yes, ma'am, for the substitute motion, what we have is that we have authorized the, we're authorizing the city attorney to, uh, develop the paperwork so that we can actually have a moratorium, because it has to be in writing. Then we went through the discussion phase, we've been through the discussion phase, so now I'm calling for the vote to authorize the city attorney, and I'll call for the vote again.
And I would like to finish the discussion stage.
Aye. All opposed? There you have it. Okay, next one is notification of the special permits.
Madam Clerk, my vote was no.
Yeah, okay. Uh, notification for the, uh, special permits. Um, so what we're gonna do here is, um, um, anything that has, frankly, a special permit attached to it. Uh, once again, I will put this on my plate as the mayor, uh, to be able to uh, give a special notification via email to, um, uh, council. So, um, I'll take a motion authorizing for the notification of special permits.
Mr. Mayor, again, I, I, I do think that that doesn't require a motion. I mean, if you want to make that a policy issue, and you want, you want, you know, distribute information where it is not required to council, that's fine. But, you know, the way that zoning is set up currently, you know, you're not required, you know, to give notification. But it would be a decent thing to do, and I, I do think it is the right thing to do. But, you know, if you want to, if you want to construct a policy and say going forward, we want to do this, you know, give council notification, but where does that stop? And when do, when, when, what happened if you violate that? When you, one day you don't give us notification. Or what happened when the next mayor come? You know, or, you know, so we got a lot of things to consider when we talk about these. These are really good ideas, and they should be put forward, but we have to figure out how to do it to make it lasting and sticking. So we gotta make it stick and we gotta make it last. So, uh, for anything that we do there.
I think, yeah, like, Councilman, uh, Councilman Turner.
Um, under the old system, the cap county had two books, one for residential, one for commercial. One's red and one's blue. You go there, you find out what applications have been made. Uh, here in the city of Stonecrest, we have it online. And on next Monday, I believe staff has given, um, a tutorial on how to use that online system to locate any application that has been made. So citizens, council, and anyone who wants to know what applications have been made to the city of Stonecrest can find the data. Uh, but sometimes we do need a little prompting, something of that nature, probably, we should get a prompt. But it will be online for public, can everybody sustain.
Okay, so, um, there is no current motion on the table for a notification of special permits. Uh, we're having simply a discussion with it. I agree with Councilman Turner and Councilman Clinton. Uh, is there any further discussion with regards to this? Seeing none, that matter is closed. Mr. City Manager. Mr. Interim, 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 city manager.
Let, let me be clear, for the record. I, I, as much as I love the city, I am not your city manager.
Okay.
I'm, I'm here to just helping you out until we, uh, on the interim, to, and, and then someone permanent fill the role. And I appreciate your indulgence. I'm a bit out of practice. I did this for a while, but it's been a while. I just want to make that clear for the folks who survived the, the, the long evening and, and the chairs out there. If I could, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to update the, the, you folks on the
What's yours?
Process. Um, I've been talking to, uh, some retired city managers, folks with experience, to come in on an interim basis, to, to sit in this chair and, and sit in the office over there and guide the staff and advise you. While we, while we do a, a longer search for folks, uh, most of the, in most cases, will have jobs already, so it'll require, once, once we get through the process, give notice. So we're talking a couple months probably before we have a permanent person. So I'm looking to get a, an interim in here next week, um, who can just keep things rolling. Uh, Mr. Denmark and I are working out the process, but, uh, as I understand it, the mayor needs to appoint even the interim city manager, and, and you folks have to approve. So I'm looking for somebody, except me, and I hope you won't, you won't give the, the interim city manager too much grief in terms of screening. Because literally, I'm, you know, we'll get, we'll get somebody in here permanently, um, as quickly as we can. And, and I'm, I'm only looking at folks with, with experience doing this because we don't want somebody learning out the job at, at this stage again. You know, if I have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Interim, interim. Oh, oh, sorry.
While we... You gonna address, uh, City Clerk as well?
Oh, yeah. No question.
Yes, sir. Um, Mr. Harris actually completed interviewing last week, and, and he's made a recommendation, so we'll be bringing a person forward for your consideration on this meeting. I think that should be the skipper.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, Madam City Attorney.
I just, uh, properly introduced Krista Freeman, my talented associate who, uh, does all the work and I take all the credit. Uh, I just wanted to formally introduce her. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Let's go. Uh, turn one. Pretty welcome. Councilman Clinton. Alright, um, turn two.
Um, I'd be compelled to say something about the C store at the corner of Salem and Evans Mill, and quickly. Um, I became known in this community about seventeen or eighteen years ago for fighting against development on that corner, because both corners there are zone commercial. And we were successful in repelling them then, and we even formed a coalition called the Salem and Evans Mill Coalition to deal with unwanted development in the community. And that's been our charge and my charge. And to say that we are taking this lightly, uh, I take exception to that. We are not taking it lightly. Uh, we searched every angle we possibly could to try to find a way to, uh, to deny this application legally. If it meets legal requirement, you know, we've got to uphold the law. Now, some of the things we're taking a look at is its impact on the strain with the EPA, we talked to EPD. I've even talked to DOT about the trucks coming on, um, Salem Road, which by the way, is a truck route. So that, we are looking at that angle. His proximity to the subdivision is another consideration, as well as the size of the facility itself. And to make sure that they have met every requirement. So that is my commitment, is to do what I believe is right for the community and listen to the citizens of that area. So not to do any grandstanding, but just to reaffirm what I've been doing for the last twenty, fifteen, twenty years.
Excellent. Councilwoman Donal?
Yes. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens who came out tonight and you shared your concern. You made it real clear to us what's important to you. And I think that was a good example of democracy at its best. And I think the next best step is for the council to listen and to take quick action. My next comment is specifically to the city attorney. I'm very disappointed tonight. Um, because as of now, we don't have a parliamentarian to, to ensure that these meetings are conducted with some level of professionalism following our own laws and ordinances, and to have you sit there and not even address um, the, the problem with the Roberts' rules, I am just appalled. And then there's no penalty. There's no penalty when someone is, is socially out of order. Regardless of who it is, everyone up here gets one vote, so we have an equal voice. So I want to request that our city attorney research our resolution, that we all pass unanimously on Roberts' rules, and I'd like to know his opinion on the time of the it is ten minutes, and I would like for him to opine it at the next meeting.
I want to thank you all for coming out this evening. And I really, really appreciate you all's time and dedication. Have a good evening.